I know that Councilmember Diaz is on his way, so he'll be joining us when he comes into the room. But it is now 7:02, and today is November 1st, and you can definitely feel that in the air as you walk towards the room. Welcome to Clayton City Council meeting. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And Janet, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Diaz is not in the room. Councilmember Juan?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Here.
Mayor Cloven?
I'm here as well. And with that, Janet, could you roll the meeting protocol video, please?
Tonight's meeting will be conducted both in person and remotely via Zoom. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live remote oral comment via the Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted, and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. This meeting is also being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenter's staff and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Their mayor will call on members of the public that are attending in person first, and then shall call on members of the public that are participating via Zoom. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating in person wishing to speak on an item may submit a speaker card with the city clerk. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial *9, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 p.m. today will be entered into the record, but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Thank you, Janet. And with that, we'll move on to item number three, which is the pledges. Will you all stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. And with that, we're going to move on to item number four, which is our consent calendar. And I'll bring this to council. Are there any items on the consent calendar which you'd like pulled for discussion? Seeing none, I will open it up to public comment on the consent calendar. If there are any in our audience, both locally and virtually, that would like to speak, public comment on this, please raise your hand. Janet, do we have any hands?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thank you. And with that, item number four, Consent Calendar, public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to City Council. Could I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second. Oh, either one.
I have a first by Councilmember Wolf, a second by Councilmember Juan. And with that, Janet, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Aye.
Mayor Cloven?
Aye. And with that, it passes forward to nothing, and we will close item number four, the consent calendar, and move on to item number five, which is recognitions and presentations. And item number five A is for information only. We have historically, or last year, acknowledged Dutch-American Heritage Day on November 16th and Native American Heritage Month. And last year, then-mayor C.W. Wolf read some lengthy proclamations on those items, and so we will just carry forward those to this year. This month, I am going to read a proclamation, item number five B, which is Shelter-in-Place Education Day. And proclamation goes like this. I'm declaring November 2nd tomorrow, 2022, a Shelter-in-Place Education Day. Whereas the public and private schools and childcare centers throughout Contra Costa County will be participating in a Shelter-in-Place drill on November 2nd, and whereas Contra Costa Community Awareness Emergency Response Group, CAER, CARE, is sponsoring the 21st Annual Shelter-in-Place Drill and assisting schools and childcare centers with their emergency preparedness. And whereas emergency response agencies, including fire, sheriff, and health officials, all recommend Shelter-in-Place as an immediate action to take care, take in case of hazardous release. And whereas the Shelter-in-Place drill increases public awarenesses about the Shelter-in-Place as a proactive action that gives students and teachers practice in implementing this as an important procedure. And whereas the county office of education has endorsed the virtual Shelter-in-Place drill and encouraged all sites to participate. Now, therefore, I, Peter Cloven, mayor on behalf of the Clayton City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2nd, 2022, a Shelter-in-Place Education Day, and encourage participation in Contra Costa Care Groups' public education efforts in support of the parents, teachers, students, and staff that will be participating with hundreds of other schools and childcare centers in the Shelter-in-Place drill. And with that, we will close item number five B, and we'll move on to item number five C, which is the-
Mayor, if I might, since we have so many people in the audience, would it be acceptable to switch the order of five C and five D since our other presenters on Zoom?
I actually kind of like that idea. You are right on with that. So we are going to change five C to five D, and we're going to go with five D, which is a welcome and recognition of our new businesses. And I think this is an item that was brought to attention by Vice Mayor Tillman a while ago. And I'll turn it over to you, City Manager. Rayna.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It is with great pleasure that I am kicking off a process where we will regularly offer the opportunity to new businesses that have started in the City of Clayton in this time since January 1st of this year, but typically about a six-month period, to come to the council, to be welcomed, and to speak briefly, if they'd like to, in order to introduce their businesses and provide any other information. And so if there are businesses who are here, and I'm guessing there are some, if you would like to, one by one, not all at once, come up to the microphone, turn it on by hitting the green button, and you'll have a couple of minutes to introduce yourself and your business, and let us know who you are and what you do. And we'd like to just really welcome you to the City of Clayton. So come on up.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Cloven and City Council members. My name is Dr. Austin Brown. I am accompanied tonight by my wife, Chelsea, and our three kids. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We've felt very warmly welcomed to the community here in Clayton. I actually grew up in the area, in Antioch, but had been away for many years with school. And most recently, I was in the Army as a dentist for the last five years. So I did a general residency through the Army and had an additional four years on active duty. But upon finishing my contract, found an awesome opportunity here in Clayton to purchase a dental practice. My practice is located off of Clayton Road. It's in the Clayton Station Shopping Center, just next to the Safeway. My predecessor is Dr. Christina Mason, who's been in the community for a long time, I think 25, 30 years as a dentist. And so she and I, we've become close friends. She's been very supportive of me and welcomed me into her practice and the community, along with everyone else. Our practice, we do comprehensive dentistry. We tend to focus on creating positive dental experiences. We have many patients who come in with a fear of dentistry, and it's common across the board. But we really strongly focus on making the experience better, putting patients first, offering laughing gas, sedation options, whatever is needed to help patients feel more comfortable, to promote greater confidence in oral health. We do Invisalign implants, dentures, crown bridges. And so I really inherited a great practice, a great team, and am grateful to be a part of this community for the foreseeable future. So thank you again, everyone, for the warm welcome we've received and look forward to being a part of this community for many years and probably decades to come. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Go ahead and come up to the mic if you have a business you'd like to talk about. Just don't be shy. Want to hear something about you.
There you go. He didn't turn it off, huh? Thank you, Mayor Cloven and City Council. I am part of Maraki Reeth and Floral Company. My business partner had to go to North Carolina. Her dad got really ill, so she went to take care of him. So it's just me tonight. And we are so glad to be here in this community. We started our brick and mortar in June 5th of 2022. So we haven't been downtown Clayton that long. Started actually, I live in Clayton, started actually in my garage, like Apple computer, right? But so excited to have a place where we can create. We started off doing wreaths. I'm a teacher by day, and I work at the business by nights and weekends. And that's kind of how it goes. We do a lot of events, a lot of weddings. We do fresh floral wreaths. We combine our love of teaching and flowers, and we do a lot of wreath workshops and fresh floral workshops. It's an honor to be part of Clayton. My family has been here for almost seven years. We moved from North Carolina, started off in Livermore, moved to North Carolina, and we have just loved Clayton. My husband is a worship pastor at North Creek Church, so we keep very, very busy. So wish we could put more time into our business, but we are learning that it'll come. We're just really grateful to be here. My business partner, Ashley McKinley, and I are just honored and very blessed to be part of this community. And we look forward to serving you in this very creative and special way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up at the gallery.
Sorry. Yeah. Good evening. My name is Yedena, and I am partner. And we opened a GE Fine Art Gallery in Clayton. So 26 local artists, three photographers, three jewelry designers. We have different type of art. And I am professional artist myself. I was taught around the world, and a lot of my pieces also around the world. So please welcome, or thank you for welcoming us. And please come and see our beautiful place we create. We're very honored that you help us to open our gallery, and we're looking forward to be in Clayton as long as we can. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good start. Hi, my name is Molly Berry. I have been a resident of Clayton for a little over a year now. I am the owner of Poet Street Designs, which is a residential interior design firm. And I am just excited to kind of get started and spread some roots here and hopefully update some of these homes in this beautiful town. And yeah, just kind of help everyone out. I do everything from full kitchen remodels, sending out permits, all the way to helping pick out pink colors and pillows and lamps and all that kind of cutesy stuff. So yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Welcome. Are there any other businesses that would like to come up and introduce themselves? Hey, just out of curiosity, how many were opened last year that we invited to come tonight?
There were a total of 41 businesses. I think there were about 12 to 15 that were brick and mortar businesses. The others are home occupation businesses similar to the interior design.
You know, it's really important that as a council and as a city that we really support our small business ventures here in our town. And I really want to thank Vice Mayor Tillman for bringing us their attention. And I really appreciate you all for coming on and working and doing business here in our town. Thank you very, very much. And at some point in the future, when there are brick and mortar businesses that open for the first time, that there should be a package the city will put together where you can actually say, hey, we're going to be opening on this day. We'd love to have some council members or staff be there for the opening, so it's not so hard for you all to track us down. We really appreciate that and want to be a part of your venture and hope it's successful. With that, we're going to close item nine, five D.
Mayor Cloven?
Yes.
Do you want to just?
I don't think there are any members in the Zoom audience who were businesses. But if there are, they're welcome to give a brief comment.
Were there any businesses online? Janet?
Mayor Cloven, I don't show any hands raised on this item, but if there are any businesses, they can just hit *9. That'll raise their hand, and they can speak for up to three minutes.
Well, wait a moment, then.
And Mayor Cloven, no hands are going up. So I think we're ready to proceed.
All right. Since there are no other hands up to introduce themselves, we will close this item, item number five D, and we'll move it on back to item number five C, which is the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control District presentation. And we're going to move on to Nola Woods. Is she present?
Yes, Mayor Cloven. She's present on Zoom, and she's been promoted up to a panelist.
Excellent.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate the invitation to be here tonight. And Janet, should I share my screen? Or do you have the presentation there for me to advance?
We could do it either way. If you have it on your screen, that might be a little bit easier.
Okay. That's not a problem at all. I will share my screen. And there we go. All right. Well, again, thank you so much for having me here today. I'd like to introduce myself. First off, my name is Nola Woods, and I am the Public Affairs Director for the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control District. And as you can see from our logo, we are celebrating our 95th anniversary this year. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about who we are, what we do, and how we protect public health for Contra Costa County citizens. And I have information for you about a trustee opening that we have for Clayton. And it's on our Board of Trustees, and I'd like to share a little information on how citizens can get involved. First, just a little bit about how we came to be. During the 1920s, Contra Costa County, particularly the areas that are within 20 miles or so of our coastal communities, well, they were so inundated with mosquitoes, particularly the salt marsh mosquito, that citizens literally had to close schools. They couldn't sell homes, and the area was deemed virtually uninhabitable. And so in 1926, the citizens of Contra Costa County voted to create our district. And at first, we were named the Contra Costa Mosquito Abatement District, and we opened our doors in 1927. Then in 1993, Contra Costa County actually transferred its rat and mouse and rabies risk reduction programs to the district. Subsequently, we changed our name to the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control District, and that's the way we've been ever since. Very quickly, our mission statement is the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control District is a public health agency dedicated to protecting the community from mosquitoes and other vectors of disease. And that leads me to the number one question that we typically receive. What is a vector? Well, when it comes to our public health definition, it is any insect or other animal that can transmit the causative agents of disease or cause discomfort to people or other animals. So the Contra Costa Mosquito and Vector Control District is an independent special district. We are actually not part of county government. We currently have 34 full-time positions, and we hire seasonal employees as needed, particularly during the busy mosquito season in the spring through the summer. And actually, those seasonals work all the way until Halloween. So yesterday was our last day of seasonals for 2022. Together, we provide public health services for all Contra Costa County residents. And we are governed by a Board of Trustees. There are 22 total members of our Board of Trustees. Each of 19 cities has a representative on our Board of Trustees, and there are three trustees who actually represent the county at large. And one of the things that's important to know is how we are funded as a special district. For a long time, we used to say that our services are free. We don't say that anymore because that's actually not accurate. Our services are paid for by property taxes and in certain areas, benefit assessment. And so now, we say there is no additional charge when we perform our public health services. We provide public health services to reduce the risk of mosquitoes, rats and mice, skunks, ticks, yellow jackets. And we have a service specifically for honeybees, which is inspection and education. So when it comes to the district's Board of Trustees, the job of a trustee is to represent the best interests of your community, to ensure the delivery of essential local services and infrastructure, and faithfully serve the public good while upholding the law. Each trustee on the district's Board of Trustees is appointed by their respected city council or by the county Board of Supervisors for a term of two to four years. Each trustee receives an allowance not to exceed $100 per month, and that's in lieu of expenses while attending official district meetings. And prior to the pandemic, the Board of Trustees held meetings every other month at the district office, which is starting in January, every other month, second Monday of the month, at our district office in Concord. Now, due to the pandemic, the Board continues to have virtual meetings as we are tonight here with the city council meeting. Early next year, however, we anticipate we will be able to return to in-person meetings, and that means that the meetings would likely return to every other month. Currently, we've had to have the meetings each month in order to confirm that the following month would continue to be virtual. Hopefully, early next year, we'll go back to every other month. And our board meetings are open to the public. So as I come to the end of my presentation, I would like to ask if you would be willing to get the word out that we have an opening on our Board of Trustees for a representative from Clayton? If it's possible, if you could share the information in places as you can, on social media, in newsletters, and at events and gatherings with constituents. And it really would be great if we could get a Clayton resident approved by the Board by the end of the year so that that trustee could start in the new year. So thank you so much for the time to share this information with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation. Are there any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Wolf.
So the trustees report out to their various city councils? Or how does that work?
So yes, they absolutely can provide a presentation, or a report, rather, to their respective city councils after meetings. We also post our minutes from each meeting on our website, contracostamosquito.com. So it's really up to the individual city council what they would require as far as reporting. Some do provide a regular report to their city councils, and some do not. So it really would be up to you as the city council what you would like to have them do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yeah, thank you. By the way, I want to thank you because I get the bulletins that you send out on a frequently, I don't know what the frequency is, but I get them occasionally on email. But my question is, and maybe I miss it because I was taking care of some of the business. Typically, when is the mosquito season? Isn't it in the summertime more than it is now as we get into the fall and winter?
That's a really good question. Thank you for asking that. So Contra Costa County, believe it or not, we have 23 different established species of mosquitoes just in Contra Costa County. As you may have heard recently, we did discover a new species of mosquito, which is the invasive 80s egypti mosquito in a neighborhood in Martinez. And we are working to prevent that mosquito from spreading elsewhere and trying to stop it right where it is right now. But when it comes to mosquitoes here in Contra Costa, we actually, because we have so many different mosquitoes, you may see mosquitoes around various times of the year, really from spring all the way into fall as long as the weather stays warmer. So right now, even though it's November, we're still recommending that folks make sure they walk around their yards tomorrow and dump out any standing water because the rain will collect in places, and we don't want to give mosquitoes any water for they can potentially develop into biting adults. So really, spring into fall, as long as it stays relatively warmer, we can have mosquito season.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Does anybody in your audience, both locally and virtually, have a question? No, let's go ahead and go to the mic.
Hi, Ed Miller. And I'm in the Dana Ridge neighborhood. I actually recently was, obviously, for obvious reasons, visiting a lot of people around the city, and I met our current representative, around the city, and I met our current representative, who informed me that unfortunately, she and her partner will be moving out of state, and I believe she's served for 18 years. So this may, I may be wrong. Ms. Woods, you can let us know. Is this going to be, for Clayton, another opportunity for someone who wants to represent the city to step up and volunteer to be appointed? That concludes my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is exactly why I am here, because you're absolutely right. Our previous trustee, Peggy, was wonderful, and she did serve on the Board of Trustees for many, many years, but she is moving out of the area, so she can no longer represent Clayton on our Board of Trustees. So this is most definitely an opportunity for a citizen who wants to be more involved in their community, who would like to be a trustee on the Board of Trustees, to make themselves known to the city council, because it is up to the Clayton City Council to appoint someone to our Board of Trustees.
Any other questions in the audience?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. And with that, I guess that is public comment, because I'm asking questions from the audience, so I will, I should have opened it, but we will close public comment from the audience and bring it back to the council. I just wanted to say, wow, thank you, Peggy. 18 years of service on this committee, on our behalf as a city, is really, truly appreciated. And it'd be awesome if we could find somebody with the same commitment as you. That's incredible. Thank you. Any other comments from council or questions from council?
Me.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
No, I'll just echo that sentiment and thank Peggy for her years of service, and then also just ask the city manager, will we be posting anything besides an announcement that this is open? Is there an application process, et cetera? Can we discuss that? It's posted on the website.
It's already posted on the website with the information.
Okay, then we'll share it from there, and then hopefully get somebody seated before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was much appreciated.
Thank you.
And with that, we will close item number 5C, and actually, item number 5 altogether, and we'll move on to item number 6, which is reports. And we'll start off with 6A, which is our city manager's report. Raina, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Two updates this evening. The first is, I'm delighted to announce that effective Monday, the 14th, the City of Clayton's new Chief of Police will be starting. His name is Rich McKeechen. Many of you may know soon-to-be-Chief McKeechen, as he spent 11 years here in Clayton as an officer and sergeant from 2005 to 2016, and I'm happy to welcome him back. He will begin his service on the 14th, and he will be here at city council on the 15th for the official public swearing-in ceremony. So, very nice, big thanks to interim Chief Kynes, who's done a great job while he's been here, but I know he's, I think, looking forward to having a little more of his retirement back to himself as Chief McKeechen starts. So, very good news on that front. The second, as you all know, last Friday, I notified the council of my intent to step down from my position as city manager effective February 3rd of next year. I have greatly appreciated my time here and the support of the council and staff during that period, and it's really a bittersweet transition for me. But I do want to make it as smooth a transition as possible, so I just wanted to let the council know that, again, at the meeting on November 15th, I will be bringing a report forward with a recommendation on a number of pieces of process to move through the recruitment for a new city manager, including the likely need for an interim city manager, likely to bring on an executive recruiting firm for the actual city manager search, as well as the consideration of appointing a council ad hoc to facilitate speeding up some of the pieces of the process. Ultimately, anyone, the interviews will be held by the full council, and the appointment will be made by the full council. But many communities use an ad hoc to speed up certain pieces of the process. So I just wanted to let you know that there's a plan, and you will see that on November 15th to help ensure a smooth transition. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. With that, we'll close item number 6A, move to item number 6B, which is city reports about what you've done for Clayton in the past couple weeks. And we're going to start off with Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you. Very short number of the events that took place between the last city council meeting and tonight, but on the 26th, I attended Clayton Historical Society's social meeting. They're a good group. There was about a dozen people after that, very interested in the local situation here in Clayton, and I will be attending another meeting with them. They, I joined the organization some time ago, and now they're starting to get active and, right now, because of the particular political climate. On the 27th, attended the CBCA General Membership Meeting. Then on the 28th, I attended my usual meeting with the East Bay Regional Communication System, and it was relatively, just, we had, we normally meet once a quarter, but because of the fact that the organization wants to meet via Zoom, we have to meet every 30 days in order to renew that. Lastly, last night was Halloween, in case you didn't know, and I don't know about you, I only had about 12 people, yet I had, I still have a stack of candy at home, so I'll be dispersing that around City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember One.
Yeah, I spent the better part of the last couple weeks mostly campaigning and talking with folks around town, so that was always a good experience, and that's the extent of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
Saw you looking over this way. Okay, I met with you, I met with our city manager, and attended the CBCA meeting, where I've been confirmed as the president, starting in January. Look forward to that, so even though I'll be leaving the council, I'll have a full plate of volunteering here in Clayton. Also, attended our Heyday celebration on the 30th, which was fantastic. They want to thank the CBCA, the Clayton Community Church, and the CVCHS, the Clayton Valley Charter High School Junior Eagles Football Team and Cheer Team for coming out and also supporting this, and it turned out very well, and we're looking forward to having an even bigger and better celebration next year. And then finally, attended the East Contra Costa Habitat Conservancy meeting. It's our second to the last meeting of the year, and we are one meeting away from getting the Roddy Ranch Restoration Project underway. That's going to bring the old golf course back into wetlands and wildlife habitat, and there's going to be a lot of great plans there with regard to public access. So, once that's done, in the next five to 10 years, depending, it'll be great for Claytonians to get out there and to see that. So that is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. Vice Mayor Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. On the 22nd, I attended the CASA, which is a court-appointed special advocate gala, which was nice to be able to hear from folks who have foster kids, that they are actually interacting with, and how they are meaningful in their lives, and got some contacts for people here in town, which was nice. On the 28th, I attended, actually, on the 27th, I also attended the CBCA meeting at Travis Bank. On the 28th, I attended the Elected Women's Luncheon here at our local golf course at Oakhurst. That was nice to be able to have not only our two female candidates that are running this year, but also some others that are in our community, so that they can interact with others as well, and help bridge partnerships with others in the region. On the 30th, I also attended Heyday. Thank you very much for your part, Councilmember Wolf, as well as the CBCA and the Clayton Community Church. I'm putting that on. It was great to see all the kiddos in their costumes, and even the adults that were in their costumes coming around and getting some candy. The winner, two, there were two winners, actually, for greatest costumes. One, I happened to be married to, and he was the Stay Puft Marshmallow Man, and another family that happened to be cute little three-year-old girl, and their parents were dressed together as, so they won the family award. They were vampires. He was a beach vampire. Anyway, it was fun. And then on the, let's see, on Saturday, I also attended the Clayton Community Library Foundation's book sale, which was great. If you guys missed it, you missed a great sale. I got five items, one of which were some flashcards for AP, the AP exam. So if you're missing it and you think it's only books, please come out to the next one that they're having. They have them every six months, and they were a dollar. So there's test prep material, there's books for people of all ages, and they really put on a great event. And at our next meeting, I'll report out how much they actually earned. And finally, two things. One, I had, I failed to mention that I was appointed as the vice chair of the Cal City's Community Services Policy Committee for the upcoming year, and I've shared with all of you guys what that really means. Our committee is tasked with not only libraries, the elderly and young students, and early childhood education, but also fire prevention. And so for me, that's the biggest one, given our area and the fire danger that's here. So if there are any community members who have any ideas on what you would like me to bring forward as far as agenda items, we will begin meeting in January. So I have my first meeting in December with them, and I will bring back, at those two meetings in December, what I've learned from that. And final update is TLC meeting tomorrow, and that is at 6:30 here, in case anybody wants to come in and listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Tillman. And for those of you out in the public who have had concerns about landscaping, why not jump in on the TLC meeting and hear what they're doing? We do have an engaged committee that is actually involved and doing the work on behalf of our city. As far as my participation this last couple weeks, I got to say that I'd never, I missed the Heyday last year, so this was my first one, to sing the trunk-a-treat, and I was really impressed with the energy and the volume of families that showed, as well as the work that was being done by our community. I can see that growing to something pretty spectacular in the future and becoming another event similar to our Fourth of July parade, just as far as the amount of kids and making a parade out of it, just, it could be an amazing event, and I really appreciated those who put it on. I also was at the CBCA meeting last Thursday, and I wanted to thank Travis Cretigan for putting it on in their space. They are only literally in our city bank, and I appreciate their presence here locally, and as well as all small businesses that work in our city. Lots of conversation, especially after Friday, in light of our receiving the letter from our city manager, and I just want to acknowledge personally that I really appreciate you and everything you've done, and I'm looking forward to weaning every last of these moments in the last three months from your experience and knowledge, and getting us through to the next place, and working together as a city to find that replacement. It's going to be tough. You are a pretty amazing city manager, and I appreciate it. And with that, I'm closing my report, and closing item number 6. We're going to move on to item number 7, which is our public comment. And for those of you who know me, my priority has been, and has been consistent since the day I became mayor and took the gavel, to create a space for us to speak in a positive, respectful, and kind manner to each other, and to address all five of us. And even though we have different ideas and opinions, we all want what's best for Clayton, to treat us as a single body, not to call us out individually. And so with this, you have your time for three minutes to say your piece on what's not on the agenda, and to keep it in that vein of our do the right thing motto. And with that, I have three cards. They appear to be all speaker cards associated with our candidates, so I'll look forward to hearing from them, as well as anybody else who'd like to speak. And Ed Miller, you're the first card that I have, so speak away.
Hi, I'm Ed Miller, candidate for Clayton City Council. When I began my campaign and chose my "Trust Ed for Clayton" slogan, before there were any candidate statements or issue pages, I knew exactly what this election would come down to: Trust. I knew why members of this community wanted me to run, what it was about me that gave them hope for a different kind of candidate. I speak the truth, I listen to everyone, and I live in service to others, not myself. I believe that I exemplify the qualities Clayton needs in its leaders: Experience, fairness, and independence. Experience counts. One does not just wake up and decide to run for city council. You have to prepare. You prepare for it by, I've served this city for three years as a leader on transportation and planning committees, and in that time, I've learned much about how the city and the region operates. I've cultivated positive working relationships with leaders of the council and also regional leaders as well, and that, and I foster camaraderie and a spirit of cooperation. That is what my leadership inspires. By contrast, none of the other candidates before you tonight volunteered for any of the city committees prior to running for office. Fairness counts too, though. I've run a completely above-board campaign on real experience and original ideas, and have followed all the campaign finance and transparency laws. I haven't had to resort to negative campaigning, nor associated with shady operating pacts that are distributing information about my opponents. I haven't, I detest the discredited misinformation that has been widely distributed by my opponents in neighborhoods and on their websites, and those of their supporters. Independence counts. Voting blocks within the council need to end, rightfully or not. The current council is perceived as a 3-2 split, and citizens are divided two. I can see past the emotions and the rhetoric to the actual concerns being expressed, and work with all citizens, city staff, and council members to arrive at the best outcomes. The Juan Trupiano ticket plays a single note over and over, that you have to vote for both of them, or there will be no fiscal discipline. It's the only note they have. Well, as a fiscal conservative myself, I'm here to tell you that it's a false choice. You can have fiscal stewardship plus true leadership and experience, and a guarantee to listen to every concern you have, including taxes, without voting for a ticket. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. The next card is Bridgette. I tried to keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bridget Billiter, running for city council. I first want to say thank you to our city manager for your service to our city. I want to thank all the staff that work in City Hall, because I know it can sometimes be a very thankless job. Our interim chief as well, both the city manager and interim chief have been giving me invaluable information about the workings of City Hall to help me, you know, prepare for my campaign and run this campaign. This is our last city council meeting, one week away from the vote. I want to just use this as my closing statement to talk about why I believe that I'm the best candidate for city council. I've spent this campaign, I have not attacked any of the other candidates, I've not attacked the council, I've not complained about things that are going wrong in City Hall. Sure, there are challenges. There's always going to be challenges, but I have not spent my time focusing on the negative. And to the extent that there are challenges that are going to face any city, I saw an opportunity to help, and that's what I do. When I, when I was at the parent-faculty club, when my son was in first grade and they needed help, I didn't just complain that things weren't running well at the school. I stepped up and helped, and that's been my motto, is if I, if there's an issue, I don't just complain about it, I try to help out. And there was an open seat, and I saw that I could maybe give back. The skills that I bring to the council would be my longstanding employment, my law school degree, my ability to digest a lot of information in a short amount of time, my ability to think on my feet, if necessary, all those things that I've learned as an attorney. But in addition, I bring my long history here in Clayton, growing up here, volunteering here. I coached basketball at CYO, at St. Bonaventure, when I was 17. That was my first volunteer job here in Clayton, to coach the seventh-grade girls' team when I was a senior in high school. That's my longstanding history here, and that's why I want to help out. I hope, I appreciate all my supporters, all the people who have endorsed me, because they do see that I have the best interests of Clayton at heart. And I hope everybody, if you haven't voted yet, please vote for me on November 8th, and we'll move Clayton into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. Kim?
I'm running for Clayton City Council, and I realize we only have a week until the election. And if you're not worried about the state of Clayton's affairs and its futures, I think you should be. We have several We have several critical leadership and supportive staff positions open. We have a budget running into the red and I don't think the council is addressing the root cause by balancing the budget using one-time federal tax money or pushing for a tax increase. We need leadership that understands finance and budgeting. We have a majority council that has accomplished little in my mind over the last two years. We have a lot of proclamations and I don't think we have a lot of action. Trails and Landscaping Committee, I've asked, I understand there have been three meetings this year and I've asked for the minutes and I haven't received them. And I will do my best to attend that meeting here tomorrow night, but it is November and we still don't have any reports. And I know we talk a lot about doing the right thing for this city, but I think what we really need to do, the right thing for this city, is get our house in order, hire staff that's qualified to lead and manage in this city, and give the staff the support and the resources they need to be successful. To all the residents out there, I say to you, don't give up on this city and do not give up on this community, because I'm not giving up. I'm listening to you, I'm fighting for you, and together we will be heard over all of the noise. We love our community and we're not gonna be bullied by a machine that's been in power for decades. If you have not already voted, here's why you should vote for me. I've hired and trained hundreds of professionals in my career. I've managed and aligned many multimillion-dollar budgets. And as a marketing consultant, I understand how important it is to share accurate information, be transparent with people, and engage with the public. This election, you must decide who's best equipped to lead this city into a bright future. A 20-year bureaucrat and a data analyst, or someone with real-life business, financial, leadership, and management experience. That's what we need to move this city in the right direction. The city is facing real problems and we need real action, not talk, in order to solve our problems. A vote for me is leadership you can really trust, because I'm gonna tell it to you straight and I'm gonna ask for your feedback and I'm gonna make you part of the process. The future of this city depends on all of us working together to move in the right direction. And that's why I'm asking for your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Jeff, you are next.
One week away. You know, with the recent announcement that our city manager is resigning, thank you for your service, you know, this means that three out of our six department heads are vacant or will be soon. Yes, we have just appointed a new police chief, so I'm glad to hear it. But, you know, with the city manager, finance director, and the police chief being absent, that does create a significant gap in our staff. In the four years that I've been a member of this council, you know, I've been in the minority on a number of issues. It's time to change that. Because if we continue down this path with our leaders more interested in attending gatherings and going to meetings with no discernible outcome, rather than focusing on basic operations like maintaining a schedule of maintenance activities or balancing the budget, then we as a city will continue to hemorrhage good people and city operations will suffer. After November, the newly constituted council will be tasked with rebuilding critical staff positions. Now more than ever, we need strong leadership to guide the city and staff in both hiring and onboarding new personnel. It will be paramount to have council members who have experience in hiring staff and building and managing teams. While I started my career as a governmental auditor, I've been a people leader for over 20 years. As vice president and comptroller of a multi-billion-dollar company, I have extensive experience in managing budgets and finding and retaining talent. From entry-level positions to directors, in-office personnel, and remote workers, having this experience will be critical as we rebuild the team at city hall. This is why it is so important that our former finance director, police chief, and the Police Officers Association, representing all of our police, have all endorsed me this election. These are folks that are not politicians, but they do know the operations of our city. They have deep and recent knowledge of what it takes to run this city. They have firsthand experience working with me and want to continue working with me. And as in each case, I've gained the support of city staff, something critically important as we move forward. Election Day is one week away and I'm asking for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there any other hands in our audience for public comment? Seeing none, I'll go to Janet to see if there are hands in our virtual audience for public comment.
Mayor Clovan, I do have a few hands raised. Tuya, you have been promoted up to panelist. If you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Tuya Catalano, former council member and mayor. I have not spoken in a council meeting since my term ended two years ago. I do not wish on anyone the kind of treatment that I got in the last election, from misrepresentations to straight-up lies. And I really hoped that we would never repeat the 2020 election again in Clayton. It's one thing for us to disagree on policy matters or to be called out on inconsistencies or purely politically motivated actions. That's not what this is about. It is healthy to have different perspectives brought up so that the council can make the most informed decisions. Elected officials need to be held accountable and that's why it was disappointing to see candidate Kim Trupiano block several people, including myself, from her Facebook campaign page for asking questions from her. But what's really completely unnecessary in a small town like ours are these negative smear campaigning tactics that attack people who are putting themselves out there to volunteer their time to give back to the community. I think most Clayton residents are actually quite happy being in Clayton, for the most part, the way it is, whether four years ago or today. One thing that has changed is that we've lost staff members and council members since four years ago. I don't know what the ultimate endgame here is, but no doubt, we will see more people, more staff leave and less people step up to volunteer for the council, for commissions, for other things, unless this negative tone and divisiveness ends and unless we work together on solutions instead of complaining about what is wrong. Jeff, you and me no longer talk about city government items and our other communications are entirely pleasant. You're not a bad guy, but the keys are absolutely in your hands. It's time to stop the politics and games and for all of us to work together to keep this city the wonderful place that we all love. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Tuya. Janet, more hands?
Yes, as I promote Terry to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you, Janet, for promoting me. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the time to speak. I just wanted to recognize the city manager, Raina Schwartz, and the contributions that she's brought to the city. I know a lot of folks have, don't regularly watch these meetings or follow the agenda, but what Raina has brought to this city, I think, is quite a step up of what we've had from a city manager in the past. Folks may not recognize that when the budget items first started to come transparent to the city, this was an action of Raina's. So Raina had brought up to the entire council that in looking forward at budget projections, she was seeing concerns, long-term concerns, whereas prior, you know, prior budget cycles had been focused primarily on that one year and not looking forward. Raina brought forward that projection, the entire council raved for her work to do that. And then unfortunately, her name has been smeared and taken out of context in this election season. Raina has brought forth not only highlights about where we have sustainability concerns, but she's also brought forward some incredible staff in her time here in both Catherine and Dana as hires into the organization. Raina has also highlighted to the council the sustainability challenges that we have with underpaying our staff and how that has affected our retention. So I think that, I applaud Raina for having the courage to come into a role like this and make transparent to both the city residents and to the council, problems that didn't start on her watch and won't be solved on her watch. But she has brought forward new ideas, she has brought forward a lot of time and hard work, and we are gonna definitely miss her. And I hope that, I hope folks will appreciate her efforts now and long after she's gone as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Terry. Janet, any other hands for this item?
Our next speaker is Roy. Roy, as you're promoted to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak. Roy, I'm having issues getting you to panelist, so I'll just allow you to speak for up to three minutes.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Welcome, Roy.
Yeah, I just got in and just got the tail end of some of the things that were just being said. I'm gonna be brief as possible, actually. Yeah, I mean, a lot of words have been spent in the last five minutes about, you know, historically with some of the council members and even had this Catalano on a second ago. Bottom line, boil it all down, it's about deliverable, it's about performance. The performance is inadequate, it's deficient. And I'll say that, you know, constructively, and I hope you take it constructively, but the majority council, just, in my opinion, did not have the skill set to run this city, this town. And we see there's evidence of that. So it's about deliverable. You know, Raina, you know, I know she was there briefly a couple of years, but I yet to see, yet to see, you know, when I come into some of these meetings and I read as much as I can about them, where are the deliverables? Okay? Where are the project plans? The town is, you know, continuing to be, you know, weaned, it's not, it's unkempt and no action, you know? Where's, you know, where's the timeline? Where are the deliverables? And I'd like to see a list of those deliverables on the part of the city manager before Raina, before you leave. You know, you hope the council gets a hold of them and so what is it? What's the timeline? You know, I remember there's one item with respect to status and deliverable, was the fountain, I guess in the park there, the kids enjoy. I think there was a question about two months ago, if not longer, or at least I haven't heard the answer about what's the cost to run that thing, you know? You know, and I don't know, maybe I missed it altogether. But, so, and with respect to the candidates and some of the things that were being said, you know, I think it's evident which people have the skill sets to do the job. And we know what we have already. And the last thing I'll say is that, and I said this previously, and this is with respect to the pioneer and the mayor, and I'm saying this constructively, I'm not trying to be malicious, but we're, you know, it's political. Look at Concord, look at the messaging that takes place with Concord and Pleasant Hill. And we need better, and I think we all know the better candidates, who they are. And the current council, it's just the majority council, has not done a good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy. Appreciate your comments. And with that, Janet, are there any raise hands?
Mayor Clovan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Are there any other hands here in our audience? With no hands in our virtual audience, no hands in our current public audience, with that, we'll close item number seven in public comment. And we'll go to item number eight, which is public hearings, for which we have none. Item number nine, action items, for which we have nine, none. We do not have a closed session on item number 10. So we'll now go to item number 11, which is council items for future requests and directives for future meetings. And I will go to the city council. Are there any council members who have an item they'd like to discuss at a future meeting? Vice Mayor Tillman?
Just a request, if we may, to bring back, I'm not sure where the timeline falls, but for us to bring back the committees list prior to when we actually need to approve it. I think the normal cadence was you have the rotation and then the following meeting after that is when we discuss the committees. And I remember last year, I wanted to talk about the actual committees that were listed on there and I questioned some of them because they seem like they're, in my opinion, useless because nothing ever happens with them. I'd like a discussion, if we can, before we actually approve one and appoint who would be on them if we can bring that back before that rotation, or maybe after the rotation or maybe that night, discuss what's on it. Does that make sense?
Any other requests from council?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz.
I know I talked with Raina today, I had a meeting with her, and I know she's gonna be bringing forth some recommendations for executive search firms for our consideration to select candidates or offer candidates for the next round of city manager position. I'm not sure how to handle this, but I would like to request a closed executive session once the new council is put into place to discuss some of the firms that have worked with us before and have failed. And I want to make sure that we air that out initially in private and then publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember one.
I don't know how I want to say this. I think perhaps, Jim, maybe what you were requesting was more on the lines of a closed session on staff performance, which is actually allowed versus what you were requesting. I think that'll help get us there, if that's what you actually want. Just a thought. Mala could weigh in if she's giving me a look, so.
I have no comment. I will coordinate with Raina and the city manager and see if we have an ability to go into closed session. And if not, we'll follow up with the council.
Thank you, Mala. Any other items for future agenda? With that, we will close item number 11 and go to item number 12, which is adjournment. And I will adjourn this meeting at 8:10 PM. Thank you all for being here.